Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Robson?
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to accept comments on a proposed change to the zoning ordinance. If adopted, the ordinance will remove the conservation residential overlay zone from various undeveloped properties. This public hearing was advertised in the Observer Reporter as well as on the Peters Township website. The impacted properties have each been posted. There will be a brief presentation by township staff. This will follow by questions from council members as well as comments from the audience. Action on this ordinance for tonight may be taken after the close of the public hearing. Ms. Lauer?
Yes, on February 20th, there was a joint workshop between the Peters Township Planning Commission and council. The focus of that workshop was in part the status of the township's conservation residential overlay zoning district. It was the consensus of that meeting that properties that were undeveloped or who did not, had not at that time completed a preliminary plan would be removed from the CR zone. So on February 27, 2023, the township staff provided council proposed zoning ordinance making these changes to the conservation residential overlay zoning district in the township zoning district map. Council set a date for a public hearing on June 5. The other thing that is when that ordinance was presented by council, council had indicated that they wanted that ordinance to have pending ordinance status at that, at that time. At the May 11, 2023 regular meeting, the Peters Township Planning Commission reviewed the newly proposed ordinance and the zoning map that accompanies it and provided a recommendation for approval by Peters Township Council. So this is the zoning map as it currently exists for Peters Township. And as you're well aware, all properties in Peters Township are zoned for an authorized use. What's shown here are all the properties that are currently in the conservation residential overlay. And what the ordinance does is to remove those properties that aren't yet developed, do not have either approval of preliminary plan, or made application for the approval of a preliminary plan. So what you're left with in terms of properties in this zoning district are those shown on this, on this drawing. Now, one of the things that council had said at the time, and I believe that it makes sense, is this year we're to begin the process of developing a new comprehensive plan for Peters Township. So to the extent that properties have been removed from this zoning district, and if there is some logic to having them reinstated in that zoning district, we can look at that at that time. So, you know, for instance, the one that to me is going to be removed this evening, but we ought to give consideration to either incorporating into the conservation residential zone or the, or the mixed residential zone is this property that sits on Bevout Road, which is immediately adjacent to a large tract of land that will be eventually developed under the mixed residential zone district. So the other place that we looked at were all those properties to the right of that on McClellan Road where, where you have very difficult topography that does not lend itself for those properties being developed with half acre lots. But the intention of this ordinance is to remove all of these properties and then make consideration of including them back in part of the discussion under the, under the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lauer. Any questions from council?
Paul, I vaguely recall when we talked about this before, that I thought there was a parcel, and I think if you go back on the prior screen, I think it was that far one on the lower right, that I thought you said that that was not capable of being developed.
Oh, I do not, that's the parcel I was talking about down here. It's to the right of that circle. And that's along McClellan Road. And I do not believe that you're going to be able to develop those as half acre lots. But again, what we got from our discussion with council is that we would examine those as part of the comprehensive plan and reinstate those properties at that time if that's what made sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll now open it up to audience comments. Anyone from the audience who wishes to give their two cents is welcome to come forward. If you're going to come forward and speak, we need you to give your name and address. The court reporter has to be able to take all that down. We're going to, given the large crowd tonight, we're going to strictly enforce the five minutes that each person has to speak. So we'll start with this side of the room.
And one, one thing, Mr. Chairman, maybe the court reporter wants to swear everybody in since we are a public hearing all at once, they want to testify.
Anyone who intends to testify, raise your right hand.
Do all of you swear that the testimony will be able to hear the truth, the whole truth and the full of the truth?
Okay, my, my name is Chris Caldwell. And I got the letter. And I don't understand why I did because I have a house on McComb's Road. It was divided off, the land was divided off from a farm 50 years ago, and I've lived there for 50 years. I've, one time, one night, I got a call about replacing a guy who moved out of the township. I ran for council and served from 78 to 81. And I learned that generally speaking, the residents want low-density residential housing. And so I got this letter which said, your property is being removed from the conservation zone. And I don't understand why that is. Because my land is developed and I've lived on a developed piece of land for 50 years. So why is that not developed? Now, it's not small lot, curvilinear road, but I like it the way it is. And I, I'm hoping that it doesn't change at least for a while.
And the answer to what your question is, is that it refers to the low-density zoning district. And so from your perspective, it will not change?
I'm glad to hear it. I'm not sure why we're having this meeting because you can see there's almost no land that will be in the conservation district. There, there are a few patches on the south side and up on the north and the south central area that are still green, but they're already small lot. So what's the point of putting them in there? So I, I don't understand the point for this change. What, what will be the point of having this conservation residential overlay if almost no land is in it?
Well, the reason why you have to maintain the conservation residential zone is that if you were to change that, eliminate it across the entire township, these lots that have been developed in these plans, those homes will all become non-conforming. And so therefore, it would put those people at a disadvantage. So by, by eliminating this, what all of it impacts is undeveloped pieces of property.
Okay, I, I still don't understand the point of having it.
Well, see, the issue is, sir, we already have hundreds of houses that have been built in the conservation overlay. So we can't take the conservation overlay out of the zoning ordinance. If we do that, as Mr. Lauer said, then anyone who bought a house in the conservation overlay, they then have a non-conforming structure. So let's say a house in one of those neighborhoods burns down, if the conservation overlay no longer exists, correct me, Mr. Smith, if I'm wrong, that house couldn't be rebuilt then?
Well, it probably could be under pre-existing non-conforming use, but there's different ways, limitations on expansion of the use, limitations or title companies might flag it to your point, I think. So I think it could be rebuilt, but there could be hiccups we're trying to avoid.
Okay, nice. Can you put the map up again on the conservation overlay removal? That's not a zone, right? This is an overlay.
It's an overlay zone.
So it's, so I don't understand why some places are included and some not, like the McComb Road, this is here. Why are these places here, not in up here, there, there, there are various lots that are not in the zone? Why?
Well, the only ones we're keeping in right now are the ones where there's either a plan, correct me if I'm wrong, there's already been a plan submitted or an application's been filed, correct?
Mm-hmm, or they've been developed already, yeah.
Okay, well, as I say, my place is developed, I've lived there for 50 years, and I, this doesn't look like an improvement to me.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else from that side?
Can you leave the tablet, sir?
Excuse me?
Could you leave the tablet?
Can you spell your last name for me? Sir?
Mr. Caldwell?
Can you spell your last name?
Caldwell, C-A-L-D-W-E-L-L.
Hi, my name is Mark Miller, and I've been a resident for 37 years. I live at 142 Just About Road. And I'm the managing member of Venetia Hills LLC. And we currently own about 365 acres, which part of that was what Mr. Lauer highlighted. We worked with the township, and we've owned that since about 2002. We worked with the township as a part of the comprehensive plan process that was ultimately adopted in 2013. So that land was a large tract of land, and we worked with the township. Once the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2013, we engaged land planners, developers, other consultants to develop a master plan for the mixed-use property. Frankly, we were pretty excited about the plan that was developed. Township seemed at the time very excited about the plan that was developed that included some, you know, utilizing the mixed-use activity area on the land, that's the peripheral area on the south part. We were ready to move forward, we still remain ready to move forward with it. The impediment that's holding us up is a traffic situation exists between Bevout and Venetia Road intersection. Apparently, it has failed the traffic study that was performed for that area. And frankly, the, the, the master plan we developed tried to utilize within the constraints of the property, you know, the best use of the property, and, and to remove that would cause hardship in terms of what the economic value, what we could potentially contribute to the improvement of that intersection between Bevout and Venetia Roads. So thank you for your time, and we respectfully request that we maintain that conservation residential overlay on that one section of the Venetia Hills property.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening. Donald Graham, I'm the attorney for Venetia Hills, Mr. Miller's attorney. Just wanted to pass these out so that people can maybe follow along with me. A couple of things that I wanted to point out with respect to the comprehensive plan and how we got to where we are today. So as Mr. Miller said, he has worked with the township for well over 10 years to cooperate in the development of the comprehensive plan, development of the zoning for the property, and the development of a master plan to utilize the property in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance that was adopted. The township spent a significant amount of money and time in developing that comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance that went along with it. And in reliance with that, Mr. Miller proceeded to develop a master plan for the property, and as he advised you, he would love to move forward with that master plan. It's the traffic issues that have created the problems. Just to orient the board a little bit to what I'm talking about when I say the comprehensive plan, what I've provided to you on page 14 of the comprehensive plan, one of the specific things is to create a mixed-use node that are walkable and integrate residential and non-residential uses at moderate densities in defined locations. In point B5 there, the Venetia Road, Bevout area is specifically identified as one of the areas where that is to occur. In addition, in the goals and actions, in the expand housing choices to make Peters Township a desirable pace, place of residence for a wider range of age groups, there are a whole series of findings that I highlighted in there related to the development of alternative forms of housing, including townhouses, condominiums, senior housing, and the like. F there talks about allowing higher densities in designated areas to accommodate these more diverse housing types. There's some detail in your plan talking about how these, sorry, how these goals and actions are going to be implemented with respect to creating diverse housing options and increasing density. Perhaps most importantly, your plan specifically identifies the need for a transportation improvement at the Bevout and Venetia Road intersection. So even back in 2013, there was a recognition that there was a concern with that intersection, the need to improve it. And so that still remains the, the issue today with the development of the property is what's going to happen with that intersection. In the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, which I included in there, shows that all of the property that Venetia Hills owns was either in the conservation residential overlay, the mixed residential overlay, or the mixed-use activity center. So it was always envisioned that this particular piece of property would have a higher density and would enjoy the benefits of those ordinances. So we're here tonight to ask you to consider whether or not this property can remain in the conservation overlay. Now, why is it so important? If you go to the slide which shows the, the particular piece. So you can see, most of the property is either in the mixed residential overlay or the mixed-use center.
You know, wait, could you point to those? Because I don't know that they necessarily know where all those are.
So, excuse me, this piece here is the mixed residential. This piece right here is the conservation overlay, and then this is the mixed-use activity center. So this is one of the entrance ways into the property, and the density that would be created on that parcel is critical to providing some of the funding necessary to accommodate the road improvements that are going to be necessary at Venetia and Bevout. So we're requesting the board to consider removing from the ordinance the deletion of the conservation overlay district on this property and allowing it to remain so that we can get the density we need to develop it.
Mr. Ray, out of the 300 acres, how many are in the CR district?
I believe there's about 40, 45 acres in there.
What's been the issue with the traffic?
So the, the traffic improvements required to improve Venetia Road and Bevout Road are extremely high for a development even of 366 acres, even with density. We're in the millions to make those improvements. So we need to work to find a solution to that problem, work with the township, work with other funding sources to find a way to create the traffic improvements necessary to fix that intersection.
And in that mixed use, there is also going to be some commercial as well.
That's correct.
Is needed in that side of town.
In, in the master plan, there certainly along Venetia Road is a, a number of portions of that master plan development that provide for commercial uses.
What was your timeline of when you were developing this? You've had it for 20 years or?
Right, but the master plan, the zoning didn't get put in place until 2017. They started the master planning process, and then you had COVID hit, which put everybody back a little bit. But then also, the, the traffic studies were completed, the magnitude of the problem with the intersection of Venetia and Bevout became apparent. And so we've been working over the last few years to try and find a way to solve that problem.
It's, it's the traffic that held it up. We're ready, we have been ready for seven years to.
Wait, what? Do you all know where is, is going in there? I don't even know what would be going in there.
I think they need to straighten the roadway, which impacts the bridge that's, I guess, to the west of.
Turning lanes. Yeah, yeah, like turning lanes. It's about everything you can do in an intersection improvement.
There's no room on the sides with the existing properties that have developed. I think we talked about there'd be houses that have to be taken, if I remember correctly.
Right. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else from that side of the room?
You got one.
G R A H M.
My name is Frank La Judas. I'm the managing member of a parcel on McClellan Road with 51 acres. And I would like to discuss with you the elimination of portions of the conservation overlay that I never found favorable for the, for the market at, within Peters Township. And in particular, the duplexes and the townhouses to me, and if I can just tell you where you are here, I'm, I'm a developer. These three, this parcel and this parcel are, that'll split on McClellan Road, are the piece that I have. And then there are, the parcel on the east side of the street with, is Mr. Zrimsik in the ordinance or Mr. Zakitis in? He has a 46-acre piece. This is a 35-acre piece, and this is 25 acres. So this bump out is 100 acres that's been always associated with Finleyville. In fact, the Finleyville Post Office, the office that is, is very, but it's within Peters Township and benefits from the wonders of Peters Township and its school system and its very enlightened board members. The situation there is that their McClellan Road from Turkey Foot to Venetia Road creates a, there's a tremendous impediment there to development because of the watershed that's been created at the low point on Peters Road at approximately 563 McClellan Road. And the difference in the, all the frontage is really on the piece that Peters Pearl has. These two other parcels, the parcel in the far corner has been for sale since 2017, and it hasn't been able to sell. He's, it's 46 acres, and there are other things that are a problem, but the only way you can monetize these sites is to get the density, particularly in that bump out. And then this parcel over here, from, how do I know this? From the well over here on Turkey Foot, the, the oil company, the gas company put a, a pipe in here and then split. The Wilkinson property, which is, two brothers here control 160 acres, and their property now has the, the situation with the, with the deficiencies due to the watershed, the stream, and the, there's also, the whole area, this is the portion of Peters Township that was stripped mined in the 60s. So you, how do you, without the density, because you couldn't build, you can't build on any of those sites I just showed you now, 40% of their property can't be built on because of, of the combination of issues I brought up to you. I did a stormwater manage, stormwater management and sediment plan, which of course I had to include a 600-acre watershed to determine what could be done. So I didn't just look at it for 51 acres, I looked at it for everyone to see what was feasible. And in 2015, when you all started talking about the, the conservation and let's do all we can do to preserve land, I went to the county and I said, what can I do to turn the 10 acres of land that I have into a sanctuary for, for animals? And I actually put in a one-acre protective zone where the animals could hide during hunting season. And I have a land manager there that doesn't allow anybody on the property and controls it regularly. And people ask all the time, can you hunt it? No. Okay. I'd like to do something there, but if you strip away the, the overlay, fine, don't put in, I don't want this to become a future slum with, on this end of town because of high density. I want to maintain the feel and the elegance of Peter Township with the, with the larger lots. But in the plan that feeds, with the fees, out of the 150 home sites that I could build by setting aside, because of the way the property is, I could only get in 116, and that's with 62-foot lots. Okay? But I didn't think the 62-foot lots made sense. I wanted to go a little bigger. And when 2018, 19 came around, it was, there were other things happening, then we had 20 at COVID. So here we are today. If I had known about this in February, I would have come and, you know, said something, or if I had gotten a call from my good friends.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from that side? And we'll go to this section here now. Anyone from this section want to speak? Nobody from this section? All right, then, okay, we got one in the back.
My name is Kim Claxton. I'm a property owner in Peters Township that's been affected by change in zoning. I'm also the agent for the 46 acres on McClellan Road that is a difficult property to develop. It's the terrain, it's how you get into the property. Access is a problem on the site that, that site, we'd like to keep it in the overlay district if we can. I think it's. I think it's, I think there's problems with the overlay district, I understand. But if we can look at that site as a possible site for development, there's other properties in Peters that can take advantage of the overlay districts. Some of the properties that have been developed, maybe we should have had better rules in for the overlay district, but that's something we can address another day. So, the property on McClellan Road, the 46 acres, we've reduced the price because the property is harder to develop than some, so we're open to offers. I've only had it for 14 months now, so I haven't had it for seven years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Claxton. No one else from this section?
My name is Jedidiah Brown. I live at 319 Springdale. The way that I understand it is that this is not going to affect me because I currently have a residence at that address, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is not going to be taking anything, you know, from my land, I guess? Because, you know, I just got a thing in the mail and then a sign in my yard saying, "This is going to affect you," so I just didn't understand it, so. But nothing is going to be affected at that residence, I guess?
It can affect your current residence now.
All right, so just things around it, perhaps, I guess, or?
Perhaps, yes. Okay. You were at, what, 319?
Springdale, yes.
I mean, all this would be doing is taking away the potential for your property, if it were ever be developed beyond just a standard single-family home, to utilize smaller lots, increase density with an extra increase requirement for open space. But if your intention is to maintain just a single, single-family home in that property, then no, it's not really negatively affecting.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the middle section? See, no one will go?
Hi, my name is Julie Dixon, and I just want to clarify...
Where do you live?
I live on 159 Irish Town Road Extension.
Thank you.
D I X. Just clarify, so 2017 was the conservation overlay which allowed for quarter-acre lots. And so, you're now removing that to make it, so no longer quarter-acre lots, but now you have to be a half-acre lot to develop.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that. Okay, so in that case, I just want to speak that I am, you know, I understand there are some properties, like the bright green are not affected, it's the checkered that will be lifted from that, and I just want to state that I am in favor of this action.
And your property is currently zoned, right? It's in the overlay now, right?
Um, yeah, we're checkered. And I'm in favor of keeping half-acre as a minimum for development, sort of like the previous, the first gentleman said, Peters Township, a lot of the residents really like having the larger parcels for homes, as opposed to really tight clusters. So, I'm in favor of lifting the overlay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the middle section? Okay, we'll go to this section.
Mrs. Merrill, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Councilwoman Merrill, M E R R E L L, 105 Wona Drive. Thank you for having the hearing. Thank you for trying to put a stop to the use of this zoning. When this was first proposed, you all probably know, as being on council, I wasn't in favor of it. I could appreciate there was a need for something like it. I think what Mr. Claxton may have alluded to is that developers may have taken advantage of this in picking properties that could potentially have been larger lots to create this, use this sort of zoning. I have no problem with the idea that, you know, there may be some parcels of land, as these people have identified, that may need to be reconsidered for this if they're going to produce housing. That being said, I'm not in favor of a wholesale approval. I think selectively it could be done. I think we already have too many of these. Council perhaps should have quantified it, so many at a time, to see how the development occurred. I think also, sometimes, we were given an impression that something would be developed one way and it wasn't. For example, Justabout Farms initially came in as patio homes, and anyone who's driven down Harvest View Drive can tell you that they aren't patio homes. There may be three. I think that there's not been the diversity that we proposed in the comprehensive plan. I'm anxious to see that process start again. The other thing about the comprehensive plan that we developed years ago is that they targeted 34,000 residents? Yes, 34,000, that's another 12,000 people. The road system that they alluded to down at Venetia and Bevout is not the only problem. And the additional density of houses has created more of a problem. And I think in addition to looking at that, we need to talk really, really hard about what we're going to do with the roads. I'm concerned about the population going up that high. I don't think it gives the, keeps the aesthetic that Peters had as a rural community. And I think that if we lose that aesthetic, we lose what Peters is about. So, I applaud the fact that we're taking a step back to look at this again, and I hope that it passes so that we can hold off until a comprehensive plan is looked at again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from this side of the room? Can I just ask, is this the end of questions? Is this wrapping it up for questions? I'm not sure of the format. I just had a question kind of related, but...
Yeah, well, we're still waiting for audience comments, and then we'll have any questions from council, and then we're going to wrap it up.
Okay.
So, it's kind of speak now or forever hold your peace, man.
My name's Dr. McKay, M A C K A Y. I live on 230 Bauer Hill Road. And what you just said, I agree totally with. I moved here because I like the quiet area. I love Peters Township the way it is, and I think that half-acre lots are ideal. But my question, and it might not be relevant at all, and you guys can tell me, is when I came up here, I saw the zoning sign, so I came up to ask what it was about. And when I was here, I know that the property across from my house on Sienna Trail is for sale, and I just asked, "Hey, what's going on with that?" And it's called Cobblefield. I don't know if you guys, it's a proposed, Seth, it's called, is it just a proposal?
Very, very vague.
So, it's a vague proposal, but Seth said, "This is what's proposed." And I looked at it, and what bothers me, and I know it's early on, but it's really bothersome, is it's, there's four lots that would be Peters Township on this. The rest of it's Nottingham, 91 townhouses. The proposal of the developer, Hoskins, is to have an exit onto Sienna Trail Road, one exit. 91 townhomes dumping into Sienna Trail, Nottingham houses dumping onto Peters Township roads. Why would we do that? And I said to Seth, "Why would we allow that?" And he said, "Well, I don't think you could not allow it. Anyone can drive on anyone's roads, and I don't know what the law and the legality is." But the four houses that are in Peters Township, proposed lots, are a flood plain that are going to be a problem, and we have some neighbors here that realize that that's an issue, the flood plain. But I'd love to nip it in the bud now and talk about it because I see no reason why we have left 91 tiny townhomes from Nottingham Township dump only into Peters Township.
Oh, Dr. McKay, you've told us something that I don't think any of us...
Okay, and I think it's so early on, and that's, I'm just raising the issue because it concerned me, and I'm down there. And like I said, the only reason I found out about it is I came up because I saw the zoning meeting sign, which is across from my house. So, it's premature, but...
But Mr. Cozer, as staff, we have heard of this, and as a result of that, met with the people in Nottingham because the concerns that are expressed here are our concerns as well. And I'm going to be surprised if that moves ahead quickly. I don't even know that an official plan has been filed with Nottingham Township yet. But a lot of that decision-making, because this plan is primarily in Nottingham, will be done by Nottingham Township. That's not to say that the township or residents of the township won't have an opportunity to make input, but the decision-making process is going to be driven by Nottingham. I will say, having met with Mr. King, who chairs their Board of Supervisors, he's very sympathetic to what our concerns are, and I think he's going to make an attempt to address those as best he can within what's allowed for in that approval process. So, we will keep people aware of what's going on there, and when we have an understanding that a formal plan's been submitted, that will be in front of council for your comment.
So, the notification, I'm just, I just want to make sure I will know when that's going on so I can be back here. You would send that notification to anyone within so many miles of there?
Well, not miles.
Because my house isn't contiguous.
Yeah, but we...
It's a multi-step process, so because the flood plain's impacted, there are variances that would be at play. Everybody within 300 feet of a property that's requesting a variance gets notified, and then if the variances were to be approved, we move into the actual land development approval process, we extend that notification out to 600 feet. 600 feet of the property.
I'm still not in that. But it impacts...
But you can always see everything that's out there by simply visiting our website because it's already there.
A lot of people don't do that, though, myself included. And my point being is that 91 houses, let's just say, two people are in each of these townhomes, that's two trips a day by each person to and from work that are all on Peters Township roads. So, in my opinion, anyone that's on that thoroughfare, Sienna Trail, Bauer Hill, should all be notified. I mean, that's a major impact. A hun, that's 91 townhouses. And I know that it's not approved yet, but there has to be a better way of notification because most people don't look at the Peters Township publicity stuff, you know, the PR stuff. I'm not saying it's wrong, it's just, I mean, here are two neighbors. Do you look at that? I wouldn't even know it's there. The only reason I'm here is I saw the ordinance sign. So, I don't think your notification system's adequate. I think everyone in Peters Township should get a letter to that impact, to that effect. Anyone on that, those thoroughfares?
It is not practical that for every development that occurs in Peters Township, that a letter is going to every resident. Does that mean that...
Every resident on those roads should be. That's pennies on the dollar. Those people are the ones affected. Two cars a day are going by their house in the morning and night. How can you not notify them?
Well, our standard is what, how many feet from 600?
600 from the edge of the property. I mean, but that doesn't, I mean, that's, I understand what you're saying, but I don't find that acceptable.
I think that's something we may want to revisit, too, when we... Well, we can't, I will tell you, what we do as a township far exceeds what's required.
Well, but I don't feel that's adequate. I mean, that's ridiculous, in my opinion. You put everyone on those roads, you send one letter to them. What's the postage stamp policy say, 50 cents, 70?
60 cents.
60 cents. I think the township can afford that money. I mean, I'm really kind of bothered that this is even acceptable, that we wouldn't notify all those people. It's three main roads.
Yeah, but see, the question becomes, where do you draw the line?
I understand, but...
I mean, it's one thing, like, if they're, if they're going to build something at the crossroads, you know, next to the old high school...
I understand, I do understand that.
You know, within 600 feet, you're going to have four residents, right? I mean, where you live, unfortunately, you're right, within 600 feet, there's going to be probably one, two, three, four, five people at most, maybe.
I mean, word of mouth is good, but I just don't think it's adequate, just for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paul, what's the current zoning of that property in North Nottingham?
I don't know, but what's proposed there is...
It's low-density residential with the conservation residential overlay being proposed to be lifted. It is...
No, no, but what, in Nottingham? It's a house development.
It's a townhouse development, so it's kind of your, you know, relatively higher density residential.
And how much of that property is in Peters?
A very small portion, 15 acres or so.
And that's the only means of access. That's the only means of access that was shown. It doesn't necessarily, it's the only means of access that is possible. They, Nottingham has a concern with only one way in and one way out. The same reason council always has a concern, we have a plan with only one way in and one way out. It's not a safe way to do a development. Looking at that from the township border, I mean, that's a worse situation than what we had up here on Lucas Drive. I mean, you're, from Nottingham's perspective, I mean, you're about more than a mile away from the township line on either side.
To another point, the developer, it's four acres, but eight homes, right, half-acre lots, and then still develop the 80, 90 townhomes in Nottingham.
Well, and what's proposed is a few homes that are actually in Peters Township, and then it serves as the entrance way into this development in Nottingham. The thing that makes it terrible for us is you'll have all the people in those townhouses, you know, putting wear and tear on our streets, and we're getting no tax money from us.
Yes, that's correct. With a pickleball court that's also on the map, right on the border of Township, Peters Township, so I would imagine there's lights there. I mean, like I said, it's early on, but it's concerning. Absolutely. Anyone else on that side of the room want to speak? Anyone over here had a change of heart and want to speak?
All right, say no, but any questions or comments from council? Mr. Cozer, I would just like to point out, the, when the advertisement for this was done, it was done to enable council, if it chose, to take action on the ordinance tonight. And you can do that after you close the public hearing and open up a special meeting.
Paul, do the timeline, is the one we're going to do the redo of the comprehensive plan? Do you know what's going on in the bid?
I'm working on the RFP right now.
Okay, so it'll be moved shortly.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important everybody understands, some of these, if we vote and pass this ordinance and take all these parcels out of the conservation overlay, that doesn't mean necessarily that some of them aren't going to work their way back in when we redo the comprehensive plan. Now, certainly, we're sympathetic to the property owners who have situations like Mr. La Judas does, where you have a parcel which probably can't be developed at all if you go to the, back to the half-acre lot. However, the concern, at least my concern, and I think most people on this council share that concern, is that what we were seeing under the current alliteration of the conservation overlay was developers taking houses that normally should have been fitted on half-acre lots and still finding a way to jam them onto quarter-acre lots. So, the original goal that those of us who sat here when that overlay was adopted, that the overlay was going to result in smaller homes that were going to allow our elderly population to stay here, obviously didn't come to fruition. So, the reason that we're doing this, at least from my perspective, is to try to correct this and get this right. So, I don't want anyone leaving here tonight presuming that we passed this ordinance. Anyone who's against that quarter-acre lots is doing a great cheer thinking it's over because it's not necessarily over, and I would encourage all of you to come back whenever we start the comprehensive plan process because that'll all be brought back up again. So, with that, anybody else have any comments? If I could just clarify something based upon Mr. Curry's question. We're going to try to have the RFP out and have the process begin this year. I don't want to lead anybody to the conclusion that that's a quick process in terms of the actual development of the comprehensive plan because it does take time. I get a motion to adjourn from here.
I think somebody raised their hand over there.
Yeah, can I just say this one?
Come on up.
Yeah, shall I approach?
You have to, so she can get you.
Frank La Judas, in the interim between RFP and planning, are Mr. Miller's property, the, that's whole section on the eastern, that was the coal mining, strip mining center, is that now in limbo until the RFP? And what does one do?
It'll go back to R1 until, it'll go back to half-acre lots until we go through the comprehensive plan process.
Or the other alternative is if you actually had a development that was set to go, whether it's on your property or Mr. Miller's property, council always has the ability to take any parcel and look at it for its potential to be rezoned at that time.
You could petition council to have them rezone the property. Everybody in the township can, at any time.
Got it. Thank you for your time. Pleasure to see you again.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to say that I really appreciated the comments that came out. I know that I was part of what helped compose the disappointing outcome that the overlay district had done. I probably had a vision based on success that I'd seen in Ohio, where the properties in the set-aside lands were very appealing for the final outcome. And it has just not developed here that way, and it's been very disappointing. Thank you.
And in closing, Mrs. Merrill, thank you for not gloating because when you were up here, you warned us. You warned us, you were always against this, and I will acknowledge you were right. We have a motion in second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Oppose, say nay. adjourned.
Yep.
All right, we will call the June 5, 2023 special meeting of Peters Township Council Order. Mr. Lowery, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Shanifel?
I'm here.
Dr. Prosko?
Here.
Mr. Harkary?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Still present.
Ross? Here.
Do we have to stamp the pledge again?
It's up to you.
Do we have to?
Lord's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, in this soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Only item on the agenda for this special meeting under new business is the ordinance amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, Zoning Section 400, District Classifications, Figure 401, Current Peters Township Zoning District Map.
What is that ordinance number?
Ordinance number?
The ordinance is 893.
I'm going to move to the doct ordinance 893.
I'll second him.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Lowery.
Ms. Shanifel?
What do I say?
An a is to remove it, a no is to leave it the way it is.
Okay, I'm in favor to remove it.
Mr. Ross?
I'll vote in favor to remove it. However, I would like to say that I would, I wish that we would keep that Venetia Hills in the overlay district. I feel like that area of the township does need some development, improved roadways. There's a lot of stuff that our, you know, residents don't have over on that side of the township. So I see that as a good potential as some type of town center. So, but I'm still in favor of the vote.
Mr. Ross?
I agree with Mr. Prosko. I think when it comes back up, you know, I would like to work with you guys on how to get this going, get something on that side of township, both from a traffic and from a development side.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Harkary?
I'm with everybody else. I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I do think that, in fact, it was my impression that that one parcel was, was not going to be eliminated, but I think maybe I might have misconstrued what we were talking about back then.
You referring to the McClellan?
Yeah, the McClellan.
Mr. Steigl?
Aye.
Mr. Cozer?
Aye. Fast and seven zero. Anything else, Mr. Lowery?
That's it.
Yeah, we are adjourned.